Okay, good evening. It is 5:02 and with eight of nine board members present, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone and we'll have the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mike McMillan tonight.
Please face the flag and salute.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are several announcements tonight. As some of you know, Ms. Hill will not be here this evening. She was presented with the extraordinary opportunity to participate in today's honor Air Flight 24, which took more than 136 Vietnam War veterans on a train trip to Washington, D.C. in honor of their sacrifice. Secondly, I had the opportunity to attend the coordinated school health breakfast this morning and it was great to see the excitement in the room for the new year. This program's important mission is to improve student health and enhance their capacity to learn through the support of families, communities, and schools. And I very much appreciate our state legislature for making Tennessee the first state in the nation to mandate a coordinated school health program statewide. Thirdly, the Teacher's Supply Depot doors will open this Saturday, August 5th at 7:00 a.m. and they will remain open through 12:00 noon. All educators are invited to come and shop for donated new and used classroom materials free of charge. Thank you to all of our businesses and families who have so generously donated the materials, time, and money. Lastly, I know I speak for the entire board when I say welcome back to our students for their first half-day on Monday, August the 7th. We hope that all of our families have a wonderful year. I see one elected official back there came in. Chairman Commissioner Dave Wright is in the back and I think that's the only other, only elected official. So with that, we'll move to changes to the agenda. And board members, as we determined at Monday's work session, just a reminder that Policy I-212, which is being considered as Item 7N, is on second reading since it was approved on first reading at our July 12th meeting. Also, in response to discussion at the work session, the attachments to Item 7Z, 7CC, and 7DD, and 8A have been updated with the addition of legal references, cross-references, and the removal of a fiscal note. Are there any other changes requested at this time? Ms. Owen?
I'd like to make a motion to move Items 7B through 7M and 7O through 7U to the consent agenda. These are second readings of policies that had no questions on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Norman. And all in favor, is there any discussion on that before we vote? Okay, all in favor of that change to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing one at our system and for that, I'm going to refer to Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Any full-time educator of grades K-12 who teaches American history is eligible for consideration for the Gilder Learman Institute of American History Teacher of the Year Award. Nominated teachers must have at least three years of classroom teaching experience and plan to teach for at least one year following the award year. They cannot be past state or national winners of the award and cannot self-nominate. The selection committee also mandates that candidates demonstrate a commitment to teaching American history, show evidence of creativity and imagination in the classroom, and effectively use documents, artifacts, historic sites, oral histories, and any other primary source to engage students. Knox County Schools History Teacher Andrea Guy, who will begin her seventh year of teaching, 10th and 11th graders at Hardin Valley Academy, was nominated for the prestigious Learman History Teacher of the Year Award when her students filled out the application to have her considered. To provide you with a couple of examples of her extraordinary teaching, last summer, Ms. Guy was one of 25 teachers invited to participate in the Supreme Court Historical Society's Summer Teacher Institute where she got to meet with clerks of the court and lawyers who practiced there. They developed lesson plans, argued cases in front of the court, and met Chief Justice Roberts at a reception. She also created a program for AP History students at Hardin Valley Academy called Blunt Scholars, and this year, the program will be opened up for students countywide. In honor of being chosen as the State of Tennessee Learman History Teacher of the Year, Ms. Guy will receive a $1,000 prize, a selection of books and resources, and the opportunity to compete for the National Teacher of the Year Award in August. Please join me as we recognize Ms. Guy for her accomplishments and thank her for her amazing work as one of our teachers.
Okay, thank you, congratulations and good luck on the National Teacher of the Year for History. And it was brought to my attention, Board, that we need to vote. We voted for the changes, but we need to vote for the actual agenda, so.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Ms. Cotten?
Item 6, consent agenda.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 7A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G-180 Personnel Files as amended.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Norman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fugit.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to make a substitute motion to postpone 7A, the second reading of the Knox County Board of Education Policy G-180 Personnel Files for 30 days for clarification of the definition of personnel files, of files contents, what is redacted for public inspection, and how these will be communicated to employees and to persons requesting inspection of files.
Okay, Ms. Owen has made a substitute motion for 7A.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. Discussion, Ms. Fugit?
I was just gonna say, do we need a substitute motion or can she just ask for privilege and take it off?
What do you prefer, Ms. Owen? Or do you want to refer to Mr. Dugler?
It's either, I mean, either way, I just.
I prefer a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on that? Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no problem with this, but I thought we already delayed it 30 days before. Is this not the second time on the same policy?
Ms. Owen, did you want to?
Well, what exactly are we looking for since we know it's, the list is?
I think the first time it was delayed, maybe Mr. Norman can clarify, I think the first time it was delayed was because there were some questions from the public about things that they had not been able to find in personnel files.
Right.
And so during that time, in looking some more, it's not very clear what is supposed to be in the personnel file. And so I'd like us to look 30 more days so the Policy Review Committee can look at that and make it clear.
Okay, okay, I guess, did not our HR director explain what was in there on Monday enough to, for us to understand, or is there some other questions that we need to know?
She did, but since it's not in policy, that's where the public is having some confusion, I think.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, then we will vote on the substitute motion for 7A on these education policy G-180 Personnel Files. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Ms. Cotten?
Yes, Items 7B through 7M were approved on consent agenda, so 7N, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-212, reconsideration of instructional materials and textbooks as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on that? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Items 7O through 7U were approved on consent, so 7V, approved second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy I-382, testing accommodations for students with disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
7W, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-383, test security as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
7X, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-420, controversial issues as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
7Y, approved second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy I-421, controversial materials.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 7Z, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-431, religion in the curriculum as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion on Item Z? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 7AA, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-193, student suspension as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 7BB, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy 7194, zero tolerance as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 7CC, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-211, harassment, intimidation, and bullying or cyberbullying as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 7DD, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy 7190, code of behavior and discipline as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 7EE, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-191, misbehaviors and disciplinary options as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone Item 7EE, Board Policy J-191, misbehavior and disciplinary options, to be sent back to the Superintendent for development of a timeline that will allow comments from students, staff, and the community with reasonable time to develop a complete and final version of the policy, the disciplinary guidelines, and the definitions with the current work as its basis, to be presented to the Policy Review Committee and subsequently to this Board no later than the February work session of 2018. Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Owen on this and seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Further discussion on it? Okay, all in favor of the motion made by Ms. Owen to postpone Item 7EE until, okay? Oh, okay, all in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we move on to grants, I just, since Ms. Owen has us delay about the personnel files, I would also like to direct that we get some clarification on what happens to personnel files held at the schools. Because I would think that it would all be merged and be in one personnel file, but I don't think that's happening. And so I think we need clarification on what's, we don't need two sets of personnel files.
Okay, Ms. Dethridge, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do, even though I do agree with you, Ms. Fugit, there are some things that you put in files at school that you may not want to be permanent record at this point. If I, if I have a conversation with a teacher and we discuss things, I really don't want it sent downtown at that time. But if there's certain things that's not taken care of, then yes, but I don't know how you distinguish between temporary versus permanent.
My, my point is, I want some clarification on when stuff goes. Because I want to make sure that things that need to get into long-term personnel files get into long-term personnel files.
Okay.
That was, that's all I'm saying is just talk about it. There's no clarification about how that happens.
So we have a better understanding. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we may be out of order, but we've already had this, go ahead, Ms. Owen.
Should we go back and amend that? No, or just, no, I'm just saying, I'd like y'all to consider that as part of the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cotten?
Item 8A, approved memorandum of understanding with the Tennessee Department of Education for a Coordinated School Health Initiative Grant Award in the amount of $185,000 with required matching funds in the amount of $15,000 for the 2017-2018 school year.
I'm moved.
Okay.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this grant? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 8B, approved receipt of funds from Farmers Insurance for I Thank America's Teachers Grant in the amount of $2,500 for a library coffee bar at Fulton High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
8C, approved acceptance of donations from State Representative Harry Brooks in the amount of $19,283 for Carter High School, $25,932 for Gibbs High School, $10,639 for Halls High School, and $10,639 for South Door High School for a total amount of $66,493.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
8D, approved donations from the whole family, Goddard Industrial and Goddard Machine and Design, Griffin Electric Company, and Jim Ashley Masonry in the total amount of $17,335 toward the replacement of the gates and fencing at the entrance to the football field at South Door High School.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
8E, approved donation from Pilot Corporation in the amount of $16,000 designated for the wrestling program at Fulton High School and the request of Fulton High School to purchase wrestling mats at a cost of $17,989 using the donation and internal school funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 9A, approved contract with Kagan Professional Development for the provision of cooperative learning training and materials for the term of August 1, 2017 through July 31, 2018, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time for a total of five years.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Owen. Mr. Norman, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering, is Keith Wilson here tonight? Is Keith here? Okay. Thanks, Mr. Roswell, for sending me that information on Kagan. I guess, I guess the only question, you may, you may know this, I'm still, and I, and I want to make this a theme for pretty much everything that goes on in the school system, do we have teacher feedback? Do we have a mechanism for teacher feedback? And if we do, what was it? And so just get that, if you could, to Keith and I've left a message with him and we'll, we'll try to get that information. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item 10A, approve official names of new middle schools, Gibbs Middle School and Hardin Valley Middle School to be submitted to the State of Tennessee Department of Education.
I am for approval. Second.
Motion made by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Mr. Norman, your light's still on, did you want to, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. And with that, public forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two speakers for public forum. Remember to please state your name and county of residence and you have five minutes. Our first speaker is Crystal Yamazaki.
My name is Anna Hurley. I'm actually reading for Crystal. She says, "I live in Knox County. I am here tonight to address some common misinformation about..."
Excuse me, wait a minute.
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order, go ahead, Ms. Roundtree. This has to be, the person that has signed up will have to be the one to speak.
Okay, she's, do we know when she's going to be here? She's on her way, she must be in traffic, but she's on her way.
Okay, we'll go ahead to the second speaker.
Persephone Webb.
Good evening. My name is Persephone Webb and I live in Knox County. I am here tonight as a representative for the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign. We, as a community, are asking Knox County Schools for the following. We are asking Knox County Schools to treat transgender students exactly as their cisgender or non-transgender counterparts. This means that KCS must treat transgender girls exactly the same as all other girls and transgender boys exactly the same as all other boys. KCS staff must use gender-affirming name and pronouns when addressing and referring to transgender students, as well as require and enforce gender-affirming name and pronoun use among the student body. KCS must also give transgender students equal access to gendered spaces, including restrooms, locker rooms, sports activities, and clubs. We are also asking this board to modify Knox County Schools' existing anti-harassment policy J-210 to include language that specifically protects transgender, gender non-conforming, and other LGBTQ students from harassment and bullying. When LGBTQ students report harassment, bullying, and assault, KCS must take these reports seriously and administer disciplinary consequences accordingly. KCS must effectively intervene to stop escalation of anti-LGBT harassment, as well as proactively work to prevent anti-LGBT harassment from occurring in the first place. This board is also limiting us to two speakers now, so since we all have something relevant and valuable to contribute, I will be reading some statements from some people in attendance tonight. So, "My name is Gloria. I support LGBTQ students because I believe in equality for everyone and every child should see school as a safe, inviting space." "My name is Audrey. I support LGBTQ students because no one should have to worry about being discriminated against for being themselves." "My name is Jennifer. I support LGBTQ students because students should be worried about their homework, not their safety and ability to do their, to be their authentic selves." "My name is Audrey. I support LGBTQ students because the rate of violence against us is too high for anyone to remain silent." "My name is Cole. I support LGBTQ students because I know how it feels to be ignored by my school system and no one else should feel that awful." "My name is Tanya. I support LGBTQ students because I support all students. All students have the right to be treated with respect and dignity." "My name is Kat. I support LGBTQ students because LGBTQ students are some of the most intelligent, passionate, and creative people I know, and they need support in order to thrive and flourish as they should." "My name is Cynthia. I support LGBTQ students because their LGBT+ status makes them no different than any other student." "My name is Anna. I support LGBTQ students because, as a seminarian and soon-to-be pastor, I believe every person, regardless of their gender identity..." regardless of their gender identity or sexual orientation, is worthy of respect, love, safety, and security, especially children in our public school system. My name is Avetti. I support LGBTQ students because they are students who excel regardless of sexual orientation. And this is just a small segment of the population that's here in attendance tonight, and I beg this Board, I've been reaching out to some of you individually, to have just meetings, just to simply discuss your thoughts and opinions on what's going on with LGBTQ students, particularly transgender students. And no one has accepted a meeting with me yet, and that is completely unacceptable, and I hope that changes in the near future. So, thank you very much.
We're gonna return to our first speaker, Crystal Yamazaki. And I wanna, so we'll be closing public forum, but I did want to refer to public forum policy B-180, which on line 15 states, "Groups seeking to address the Board may be asked to select one or more delegates to speak on their behalf unless determined otherwise by the Board." And that, Madam, Madam Chair concludes public forum.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
That good?
By Mr. Norman.
Mr. McMillan.
Mr. McMillan.
I just have a quick comment before we adjourn. I know that at the retreat, you're planning to have someone come and speak to us on the training and restorative practice.
Yes, sir.
Just a thought, I, I would like for, I guess this would be directed to the Superintendent because he would have to give somebody the directions to do that. Could we have staff do a little bit of research between now and then, and, and speak to us not only on the positives, but to some of the problems where it has been tried, some of the successes, as well as potential problems or things? I think we, you know, if we're going to discuss it, I think we, we need to look at both sides regardless of, of, you know, how you feel about it.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Cote and I were working on the schedule before the meeting tonight, and it looks like we're gonna have a larger time slot there, so we will take that into consideration. Thank you. Okay, I had a motion on the floor, I believe, in a second. Did you get who made those, Ms. Cote? Okay, okay, Mr. McMillan seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned.